Today is January the 11th, 2021. Dr. Webb, everyone to the boardroom tonight for a monthly board meeting. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start out with our prayer and our pledge as always. And we're going to have Commissioner Ellis to lead us in our prayer and then Commissioner Bond to lead us in our pledge. So you would just outstandingly.
Father, I'd just like to say thank you for always being there for us, being a loving God. When we do good and when we do bad, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your leadership. As we as a group try to make the best decisions for the county, we ask for your guidance, we ask for your leadership in our daily lives so that we can set the example. And we do ask for you to fill us with your spirit so that your light will shine through us and everybody will see. Father, I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity to get together, help us do the right things, make the right decisions, and forgive us when we fail you. In our name we pray amen.
Amen.
Mr. Brown, of your heart, my pledge to lead this-
Let vengeance be the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, I hear a motion, we approve the minutes.
So may it.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. I hear a motion, we approve the agenda for tonight.
So may it.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye. Under our May on the appointments tonight, we've got a very special treat. We're going to be recognizing our former commissioners that have went off the board either by choice or election or whatever. But anyway, I'd just like to say that Barry McPeters and Lynn Green were two great commissioners and we enjoyed working with those guys over the course of the past several years since I've been on the board. And of course Lynn came on a little later, but I was talking to Lynn a little ago. Lynn and I didn't always agree on everything, but Lynn and I always stayed friends. And that's the thing, you know, what makes a good board is the versatility of it, you know, when you have several commissioners that don't always see eye to eye on everything, you know, that's what makes a good board. When you have five commissioners and all of them agree on everything in every meeting, then somebody has voted to draw them five commissioners in. So I think we've had a really good board during the course of the time, but certainly both these guys are on board and we're looking for great things to happen with both Patrick and Chris that's coming aboard. I won't waste a lot of time. I do want to allow each of the commissioners to say a word or two. Barry, I'd just like to say to you tonight that it's sure been a pleasure working with you, my friend. You have, there's one thing that you could always count on with Barry, you know, Barry would always stand firm on moral issues, which is a very important issue to me as well as most of the other commissioners and to our county. And Barry lives the life on the board that he lives at church and on his job. And I'd just like to say that I appreciate that. That one aspect of your life, Barry, you've been an influence on a lot of people. But more than, to go along with that, Barry was just a good, solid commissioner, you know. He was full of foolishness when you were not having a meeting, but whenever he's, he's like the old saying, you know, he got serious when, with an old coon dog, my daddy used to say, when he dropped the tailgate, he gets serious. So we got in the boardroom and business started. Barry's always been right on target and done a great job and I appreciate what he's done, appreciate what he means to me as a friend and as a commissioner. Barry, I want you to know that. I've known him since he was a young boy, a little skinny young boy, and we've always been friends and we got to work together and we had our disagreements, me and Barry certainly didn't agree on everything, but Barry has proven to be a good, sound commissioner. He's proven to be a valuable asset to this county and this board. And Lynn, you know, I just want to say, you definitely have been a good commissioner. I appreciate your stand that you have made even with our disagreements, you know. Lynn and I have always had a good friendship and a close friendship and that never has been deterred by our differences on the board. And he, again, Lynn has showed a lot of strong moral values in his decisions and things and wasn't afraid to stand up and state his opinion on whether it be issues to do with the county or issues to do with the moral issues of the county. Lynn has always been a strong backbone to the county and to the board in that respect and I appreciate what you've done and what you mean to me as well. We'll go ahead and let Brother David say a few words and I know he's anxious to say something.
Well, thank you Chairman Brown. I would like to say that it's been an honor to serve with Barry. I'll start with Barry because he's been here basically almost as long as I've been here as commissioner. And 16 years serving together, 16 and many more years of being a friend together and we've had a lot of good times. And I will say a few things as far as Barry as a commissioner, and we've got our resolutions of appreciation, we'll vote on here in a minute to honor both these men. But I do want to say several things that stood out to me working with Barry through the years. Number one, this building we're sitting in right now, this was purchased on a three to two vote. Two commissioners, Ben Lavender and Doxson, didn't want to buy it, two commissioners wanted to buy it, Walker and Webb. Barry McPeters was the deciding vote to buy this facility, 378 acres. It was priced a million dollars below appraisal value and we knew McDowell Tech needed long-term growth, a place to grow long-term. So Barry cast the deciding vote, three to two, to purchase this building we're in now. Another thing Barry did, and Lynn too, was the courthouse. We had been as a board told, and actually our county manager had been instructed by judicial officials that we need to do something, do something immediately or the board members could actually face, I want to say jail time? Is that right, Ashley?
It's possible.
Possible. So anyway, Commissioner McPeters, along with Commissioner Green, saw the need to do an addition at the courthouse and do, provide space for the public defender's office to go in and redo that whole facility. And at the time, the board did that. The cost to build a new courthouse was going to be $21 million. And that was solid data because two counties similar to McDowell County had just done that and built two courthouses. That was just the building, that's not the furniture. And to do what we did where the current courthouse is at was $8 million, $9 million. So I appreciate their foresight and wisdom on that. The Old Fort Senior Center, that's been a long time ago. Barry was on the board and the people who voted for it said, we need a place to go. And Barry voted to build that facility for those people and Barry did a great job there. EMS base, Barry's background is EMS, Lynn's is law enforcement. And so both the men saw the need and the plan Mr. Kaler has always been for a four base setup and they both saw the need to do that and voted to support that. And both of them have always supported law enforcement and EMS. One thing too, that volunteer firemen were very thankful for, Barry was your vote to go ahead and do the reimbursement for the firemen when they run calls. Those guys run calls and, you know, they love what they do and they're serving, protecting. But anyway, that was good there. And another biggie to me is the support of schools. Our school system, Barry, you're on the board, we voted to, as everybody knows, the school board, and we've got a great school board, cannot obtain debt. They have to go through the board commissioners to obtain debt. And so we've done two schools in cooperation with the school board since we've been on this board, two big schools and of course additions and add-ons, but two new elementary schools and Barry supported that and appreciate that. One-to-one computers, right now, we've got one-to-one computers down to kindergarten. My kindergartner has a computer that she brings home a device. And so here again, the school board had the wisdom and the commissioners worked together on that and the board sent money towards that cost. Another biggie, teacher supplement pay. We were losing teachers to counties around us. The board went in and came up with a four-year plan to increase funding to $84,000 a year. We did that for four straight years and it was a big, big boost to our teachers and they appreciated that. Another thing that Barry and Lynn, since he's been on the board also, has supported McDowell Tech. I mean, we've got one of the best colleges in the state as far as community colleges, their numbers and then what they're doing is tremendous. And, you know, last year this board had five things that we said that were not taken care of in our budget. One of them was working with McDowell Tech to get a long-term plan to provide for capital needs as they saw fit what was needed most for them. And our board's going to meet with their board just as soon as we can. And recreation, we've got Dr., our Judge Hunter with us tonight and he's probably the pioneer of the trails in McDowell County along with the McDowell Trails Group. And one thing that Barry and Lynn, both of them since they've been on the board, they supported the trails and put money to those projects and I appreciate that. And Commissioner Brown, Chairman Brown's already said it, with the moral issues, Barry McPeters has always stood there and Lynn Green too. And Lynn, it's been great to serve with you. I've got to serve with Barry 16 years and with you four years. And Lynn, it's been a good four years. When you came on the board, you got right to work and was, I would say, as our chairman has said, excellent commissioner. You did a great job and many projects you've done. Just real quick, you saw the need to purchase the building for the rest of your deeds and the board jumped on that and you were all for that. You saw the need to purchase the Cursey Building to provide space for our county administrative staff to go into, that'd be accessible to the public, that'll be close to our city manager and superintendent of schools. So in closing, I'll just say you guys, you're going to be missed and thanks for just being a friend and serving together and it's been a real honor to be on the board and sit in the chairs and make decisions that are in the best interest of McDowell County. And you voted to have always had McDowell County's best in your heart every time you voted and it was evident. So Chairman Brown, I want to say thank you for the time and guys, you're excellent commissioners. Good job. And to their families too. I want to say thanks to their families, being a commissioner, you know, the wives and the kids and all that getting dragged into a lot of stuff. So to y'all ladies back there and Mason, thanks for sharing your dad and your husbands with us for a while.
I know my wife told me one time, she said, why in the world do you want to be a commissioner? She said, before you became a commissioner, everybody loved you. She said, now half of the county hates you.
Well, I've only been here a little over two years and I have thoroughly enjoyed the knowledge that y'all have shared and Barry, both of you take a wealth of knowledge with you. You know when it happened, why it happened, a whole lot of things in the county. Lynn came from the law enforcement background, so I haven't worked with him a lot longer. But Barry was also instrumental in a lot of our training over the years. So have known both of you a long time and I appreciate everything. I appreciate the way that you made me feel comfortable when I came on the board because it was a little different for me, I guess, in a way, because I had never did anything like this. And both of you really helped me to feel comfortable along with everybody else. But I appreciate everything you did and it's a hard act to follow when you've got all of this. Appreciate you and I'll move on.
Barry and Lynn, I just want to tell you, I appreciate your friendship and appreciate your many years of service to our county, not only on the commissioner board, but in law enforcement, emergency management. We really appreciate it.
I want to say, a few years ago, I got on the school board, was nominated in, Lynn Green was on there and he said, you just hang in there and vote your conscience. And he was right. And when he left the school board, he said, and was coming over here, he was going to help continue support of the schools, which he did, which both did. I do want to say thanks for you guys coming over and having the morning meetings with the school board and getting that stuff worked out. We talked about the one-to-one, the supplement, that was a big deal and we did save some good teachers. We lost some before that, but y'all were integral in that planning. And I do know that there's big shoes to fill and phone's always open and I know that you're exceptional in what you do. So just want to say thank you for your encouragement.
Chairman Brown, I want to add one other thing. When the board went to Washington to advocate on behalf of programs for McDowell County, the first year with me and I was assigned to a room with Commissioner McPeters. And I don't know if he snored, he snored, he kept being awake half the night snoring up there he did. So anyway, I'm just glad that I got to share that experience with him.
That's enough about Washington. I think it'd be appropriate to allow these guys to say a word too. Barry, would you like to say a word? We'll start off with you.
Come up to podium.
Come up to podium, Barry.
I swear I was going to be able to hold it together tonight, but I don't know. It looks better from this end than it does coming looking out, but first off, I want to, I want to thank my Lord and Savior and my God for giving me the opportunity to service county. You know, working in EMS, you know, I always felt that was my calling, you know, I was 15 years old and I've always liked politics, not quite as like what we're seeing in Washington and stuff like that, but you know, and you mentioned Washington, I swear it's probably, I came back and I told them at church, I said, you know, I think I could move there. I said, I loved it that much. But we did get to see all the workings, I got to see old big Kane at Rassell, I watched him do some body slams a while ago on Facebook, but got to meet, you know, a lot of really good people. And what you see going on up there is not Washington that we saw. That's not, you know, I talked to a gentleman I went to church with and he said, that's not, that's not, you know, real what you're, I mean, it is, it is happening, but what you're seeing is not the true Washington DC. We know that politics, you know, come from the federal to the state to the local level, sometimes not always the best in the world. We've seen that for 16 years. But, you know, I thank my wife and my kids, you know, for, I remember everything came out in the newspaper and, you know, get a full front page ad, you know, free ads, I appreciated that, you know. My wife said, what are you doing to us? You know, I'm like, man, what did I get into? Because just like you said, everybody's your friend until you vote against them or do something wrong. And then it's all of a sudden, you find out, Chris and Patrick, you've been there and Chris, you're going to learn that, you know, people change quick and you know who you can trust. So basically it's almost you don't trust anybody. And I got to thinking, I said, you know, I've been through two county managers, about 10, 12 county commissioners, two clerks to the board, two EMS directors, three chairs and I was able to survive through all of that. It was a great, it was a great 16 years. First meeting I sat on, it was moving so fast and I'm like, man, I can't keep up with this. And good old Joe Kaler, you know, he, when we went to the computers, he still had that hard copy, you know, he had to have that. But it has been a great 16 years, I can't complain any. We've argued, we've fought. I remember talking to Dean Buff one time and, you know, being opposite parties, Dean and I agreed probably about 99% of the time on stuff. And it's just amazing how local government can work. If state and federal government could work like local government, Ashley, it's amazing what all they could get accomplished. And we accomplished a lot, you know, I look back, every once in a while I get some of my buddies from Old Fort, when the police department is going to dissolve it, I jumped out front real quick and I said, we can't do that. We've got to provide law enforcement for those people. And, you know, one of the things I always say is, the Bible says to fear God rather than fear man. And put God first, stand on moral principles, stand on what God said is right and against what God says wrong, plain and simple. Don't let outside influences try to push just because of better, but more money or whatever else maybe. I was talking to students today and what we dealt with was toxicology and alcoholism. It's terrible. But yet we, we as counties and cities and states thrive off of people's, you know, bad luck. I don't say bad luck, you know, such things luck, but just the bad things that goes on with that and drugs, we see that. So my heart, you know, is still in EMS, still teaching those kids, had two grandbabies, you know, Peyton's not here, she's playing basketball at high school, so we got to get up there for that. She's playing varsity, I'm very proud. And Mason, it's his senior year, he's just a little, he's about that big. I still got his shirt that, you know, he wore in parade and just pushing strollers and walking and handing out candy and that was a fun time. But I appreciate every single one of you, you're all my friends. My phone's open, Patrick, just like you said, it's always like that. So anytime you need me, don't hesitate. Made on the answer, you're straight off, takes me a little while, but God bless you, God bless McDowell County, our nation, I mean, you know, that flag, Tony, I appreciate your service to our country. You know, I told a military man the other day, I said, you don't know what you mean to us. I said, and I just appreciate each and every one. Thank you for this time tonight. Thank you.
[applause]
I'm bad to forget stuff, so I did jot a note or two down that I didn't want to forget. Let me say first of all, that it was a true honor and privilege to serve with this board. I served this county for 19 years with the sheriff's office. I volunteered 16 years with the McDowell Hive with our NJROTC. Every year when they had their boot camp, I'd go down and me and Brenda worked in the kitchen together. That's where we met and learned to work together. Then we worked at the sheriff's office together. The biggest honor for me in serving on this board was when people asked about the board was for me to say that that board is a board of not just Christians, but born again Christians, people that are not afraid to stand on biblical principles. And we get frowned on a lot these days for even bringing that up and people say that you shouldn't mix it, but I don't know how you can keep from it. When you're trying to govern a county or when you're trying to govern a nation, you can't lay aside your personal beliefs at any time. If you did, then what kind of a man or woman are you? I'm going to ask you to do some things for me. We promised our taxpayers that with all of these things that we've accomplished that, David, that you listed a few minutes ago, we promised them that we would go back and we would look at the property tax rate in a year or two. And I'm going to hold you to that. I'm speaking to you now as a citizen and I'm asking you to keep your promise to the people that you made because I was part of that promise. I'm going to ask you to stand firm. We put in God we trust on our buildings, we put it in our cars, now let's put it in him. If we have really put that out there for people to see, then let's stand true to that. I want to ask you to keep the mangy scene on the courthouse lawn every Christmas, regardless of what you might face and people trying to tell you that you can't do it. That courthouse lawn belongs to us. You keep it there. I want to ask you to not spend taxpayer money to promote alcohol in this county. I've seen too much damage from it, seen too much adverse effects on families from it and regardless of what folks might say, we can do without it. We can do without the business, we can do without the problems. I'm going to ask you to not spend, I'm not telling you to stand in the way of a man that's in business and wants to do something on his own, but I'm asking you not to spend taxpayer money to promote that. The next thing that I want you to do is if you need me, I've always been available to the citizens of this county 24/7. I spent a lot of time away from my family because I felt like that I was doing something that would make a difference for everybody. When I was in law enforcement, I thought I was doing something that would make a difference in protecting my children and my grandchildren from things that we did not need in this county. McDowell County, I've traveled a whole lot around the country and out of the United States and I've never found anywhere that I would rather raise a family than McDowell County in western North Carolina. And, you know, things have to change, I realize that and things will change, but we can keep it like it is and we can, we can continue to raise our families like we have in the past. It has truly been an honor for me to serve with you guys and you call on me anytime you need me, but my political days is over. I appreciate you serving with each and every one of us. Thank you.
Mr. Green, you can rest assured that everything you said tonight are things that are very important to all of us and we will, I know we'll, we'll fight hard to make every one of those things happen. Well, we've got a couple other things that we want to present to these guys. We've got a resolution and I'm going to ask Pastor Walfer if he would to stand up and read the resolution to present them to you guys and then we've got a couple plaques as well. So if you will, come on up.
Lynn, come up, can your wife come on up first? I'll get right here so I can get y'all on camera right there. This is a resolution of appreciation for former county commissioner Lynn Green. Whereas Lynn Green was elected to the board commissioners for terms extending from 2016 to 2020. And whereas numerous investments were made in education during Mr. Green's service as commissioner. A new Old Fort Elementary was constructed and opened during Mr. Green's term. The board commissioners also worked diligently to increase teacher salary supplements in order to attract and retain the best teachers. And whereas recreational opportunities increased during the tenure of Mr. Green. Mr. Green advocated strongly for the development of both the public shooting range and the Black Bear Park. The county also made a premise to all of the parks, developed multiple trails and received numerous recreation grants. And whereas the board commissioners invested heavily in developing quality public facilities during Mr. Green's term. The emergency services headquarters as well as station four were initiated. The courthouse renovation was also initiated during his time. Additional facility enhancements were made in order to provide improved services to the public. And whereas Lynn Green was always a supporter of good local government, he always supported the needs of the McDowell County community. His contributions extend beyond being a county commissioner and include his membership in church and being a loving husband and father. Lynn, we appreciate you. Mr. Chairman, will you vote on this?
What's the pleasure, board, that we accept this resolution?
So may it.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Also, we've got a plaque here that has got the McDowell County, North Carolina seal on it and it's presented to Lynn Green in recognition of grateful and grateful appreciation for your four years of dedicated service to the city. for your four years of dedicated service to the citizens of McDowell County. Board of County Commissioners, 2016 through 2020.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And also here's your take. If you, if you would, everyone come up and we'll, we'll get a picture or two made with Lynn.
And y'all get the mirror right there.
Stand right in the middle. Hold the plaque up.
Yeah, keep the plaque up.
Maybe Cam hold one if you.
Y'all get right in front, we'll get behind y'all. Yeah, y'all get right there. We'll get it behind.
Thank y'all for your service, thank you.
A resolution of appreciation for former Commissioner Barry Peters. Whereas Barry Peters was elected to the Board of Commissioners for terms extending from 2004 to 2020, serving as vice chairman for the years 2008 through 2013 and 2014 through 2018. And whereas numerous investments were made in education during Mr. Peters' service as commissioner. During his tenure, the schools re-aligned to a middle school model resulting in additions to the high school. In addition, a new Old Ford Elementary School was constructed. The Board of Commissioners also worked diligently to increase teacher salary supplements in order to attract and retain the best teachers. And whereas Mr. Peters was a deciding vote to purchase the former Universal Furniture Factory and surrounding acreage, the facility has provided space to McDowell Technical Community College, local employers, and McDowell County Emergency Services. Also, the property provides additional opportunities for residential, educational, and business development. And whereas Mr. Peters was always a strong supporter of emergency services, during his tenure, the Nevo EMS station was constructed and the emergency services headquarters as well as Station 4 were initiated. In addition, McDowell County established a consolidated 911 dispatching system during his time on the board. And whereas Mr. Peters advocated for the expansion of the county's Nevo water system, the county built over 20 miles of water lines, reclassified Lake James as a future drinking water source, and purchased a future water treatment plant site during his time on the board. And whereas recreational opportunities increased during the tenure of Mr. Peters, the county made improvements to all of the parks, developed multiple trails, and received numerous recreation grants. And whereas the Board of Commissioners heavily invested in developing quality public facilities, the Old Ford Senior Center was completed during his tenure. The law enforcement center and the courthouse were both renovated. Additional facility enhancements were made in order to provide improved services to the public. And whereas Barry Peters was always a strong supporter of good local government, he always supported the needs of the people of McDowell County. His contributions extend beyond being a county commissioner and include his membership in his church and supporting youth sports and being a loving husband and father. Chairman?
Also, we've got a nice plaque here, Commissioner Peters with McDowell County, North Carolina seal on it, presented to Barry Peters Sr. in recognition of grateful appreciation of your 16 years of dedicated service to the citizens of McDowell County, Board of County Commissioners, serving from 2004 to 2020, vice chair from 2008, 2013, 2014, 2018.
Mr. Chairman, we need to take care of the official resolution.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead and motion it, will you? Accept it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
You want to get Mason up here, Barry?
Mason.
Tony, can you come up this way, son?
Tony, I got to get one more punch in on you for you.
Let's do one more with Lynn, all of them up here, Lynn and Cam and Barry.
You went to see him eat here in the building.
Chris, you probably don't eat too much.
Varsity.
Thank you.
Try one more.
One more.
Be all over the paper.
Here we go.
Take them free seals in one day.
Are you ready?
Thanks, give them all a hand. Okay, moving along then to I and B performance. We've got a dear friend, William Keller, here to give us a COVID-19 vaccine update. So if you would, Mr. Keller, everybody.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to brief you on COVID-19, give you a quick full update as we really have two sizable operations going. One, in response to the pandemic itself and trying to identify and contain the virus and then also on the vaccine front. Today's day 302 at the Emergency Operations Center and we remain under Level 1 activation. As of today, we've conducted 33,604 tests, 29,634 of those are negative, 3,645 are positive. We released 138 new positives today from the weekend and 325 tests are pending. COVID-19 remains a significant threat to this community. Our 14-day positivity rate looks at the total amount of tests processed in a 14-day period and as of this afternoon, right at 26% of the tests we're conducting are coming back positive. This indicates widespread community transmission that is at critical levels. Last week, unfortunately, we set additional records once again for the number of new cases in a week's time. Our Roland seven-day average set a record. We set a record for active number of cases at weeks in. And we also unfortunately set records in our age group of 50 to 64 years of age and those over the age of 65 with regards to total new positives. Our numbers do not look favorable this week starting out for our elderly population and it's of significant concern as this age group is driving hospitalizations and sadly, this is where our mortality or our fatal cases occur. If you are over the age of 65 in this community, COVID-19 is a significant threat and you have to take action to mitigate against contracting this virus. One out of every four citizens in this county who have contracted COVID and are between the ages of 80 and 89 have had to be hospitalized. We're seeing continued increase in COVID-related calls at EMS and we are seeing once again weeks record setting each, we are setting a record each week for the number of COVID-positive patients we're transporting. Our hospitalization rate has spiked 2% and sadly, we've had 49 McDowell citizens pass away due to COVID. From operations standpoint, we can continue community testing sites on average. We're testing 300 individuals in a two-hour period at each testing site. Our long-term care facilities continue to be severely affected by this virus. All of our facilities in McDowell, long-term care, and skilled nursing are in outbreak status with the exception of two facilities. Outbreaks among agencies, organizations continue to require a number of man-hours for assisting these agencies with setting up testing as well as providing assistance with contact tracing. From a planning standpoint, we're continuing our plans for medical surge, looking at staffing plans, that's something that we continuously monitor at our agencies, specifically EMS and 911 staffing. I'm happy to report as of this evening, we are stable. That's our main goal is to keep it that way. Close coordination, multiple times a day with our healthcare partners. We're talking to the hospital on bed capacity. Today, they had 12 COVID-positive patients at McDowell and that's one of the highest days that we've seen. From a logistics standpoint, that division is very busy and ensuring we continue to ship PPE or deliver PPE to our long-term care facilities and supporting the community testing sites and that team that continues to test twice a week. Public information campaign continues and this group is heavily involved with advocating for the three W's. It's so important that vaccines are here, but we have to make sure we bridge the gap and not take our eye off of wearing a mask, social distancing, avoiding gatherings as we're seeing the fallout or the surge from the holidays. Vaccine planning in the call center. So this is a significant operation to get the vaccine through every McDowell County citizen that wants a vaccine. It's one of the largest logistical missions that I've ever been involved with in my career, even on out-of-state or national deployments. This is a massive operation in undertaking. Phase 1A, we have completed, but we still are able to enroll folks to make appointments for people who are in Phase 1A, which is frontline healthcare providers and emergency personnel. Those have been, those individuals who wanted a vaccine during Phase 1A have been vaccinated. Today, we moved to Phase 1B, which is for any citizen over 75 years of age or older. We began vaccinating this afternoon at McDowell High School. So far, 1,711 citizens have made appointments through our vaccine call center in the six days that it's been operational. We stood up this vaccine call center as a joint effort between the McDowell Health Department and Emergency Services. We are operating with five staffing, or five staff members and we are looking to increase that to eight this week as the volume continues to decline. This is a central location for making appointments based upon the active phase. What I want folks to understand is we're asking, if you're not eligible for the vaccine, please allow those phone lines to remain open for those 75 years of age and older. We are clearly going to communicate in advance when we're ready to move to the next phase. We are still in Phase 1B, Group 1, 75 years of age and older. The vaccine supply remains extremely limited or tight. We are receiving not thousands, but hundreds of vaccines weekly. We need that number to increase and we can't ramp up our operation to the point we want it at until the vaccine supply supports that. Peak volume of this call center, some folks, if you're calling on first thing on Monday morning, that's one of our busiest times we found. This morning, we had wait times and it's something that we're constantly monitoring. Afternoon, that volume seems to relax and is a good time to call. When I break, break this out as far as our incident command structure for operations of vaccination clinics, what this looks like for a citizen who signs up for a vaccination appointment through the call center is they are given a date, a scheduled time and a location where they receive their first shot. They'll also be scheduled for a second shot. The Moderna vaccine requires a second shot 28 days after your initial shot. The scheduling software we're using has the capability, if someone has a phone or an email to send out texts or email reminders, as this is a complicated process of having a series of vaccine or a series of shots that have to be administered. When they arrive at the testing site and they're met, we do have law enforcement assisting us from the sheriff's office, providing traffic control. They'll go through the initial station where they're registered, they move on to the vaccinations. Public health and EMS paramedics are the ones doing the vaccinations and then they proceed on to the medical monitoring area. When we roll this vaccine and we get to max capacity, you'll see multiple lanes running at these vaccine sites. Each person has to be monitored a minimum of 15 minutes. If they've had allergic reaction in the past, it is 30 minutes. You've heard me many, many times, the ones that have been on, the commissioners that have been on the board, talk about whole community approach and the importance in a disaster. And we, we've practiced this in, in exercises and to a small degree, some of the incidents, but this county's never seen an incident of this size, this complexity or magnitude. A whole community approach essentially means that we're drawing partners in from all areas. And I'm happy to report as we've launched these vaccination clinics, it was evident today, we're on the right track. We have the US Forest Service personnel there assisting with registration, law enforcement there providing traffic control. We've got the faith-based community involved in providing volunteers. Our community forums are involved, McDowell County Schools, we're drawing from all of our partners to make this operation a success. When we look at planning, we are, our team is in the process of planning, or they are planning in advance for the additional phases. And that's where we want to push the planning phase to where we're not looking at this week. Our staff is running out two to three weeks in advance on planning. Big shout out to Deputy Director Jones and the staff for we're pulling together this call center. The entire team working with public health has done amazing work to get this off of the ground in a short amount of time. One of the things that we are starting to see is starting, we're getting pressure from citizens from other counties wanting to come to McDowell to get the vaccine as we're pushing forward and running out ahead of some of the counties. And that's something that we're having to manage very closely because that can tighten our supply chain even more. In closing, the logistics section, of course, is heavily involved in making sure that we've got the right equipment and the right supplies at the right location to carry out this mission. We're looking at an operation that is very labor-intensive. When we get full lanes of traffic running and we've got people coming for first shot and then lanes for second shot, we're looking at an operation that's almost 30 people in an eight-hour day. So lots of planning, attention to detail, we've got to get it right. It's got to be a smooth rollout. We're comfortable and we're pleased with where we're at, but it's a significant team effort. The support from the county manager's office to HR to the Board of Elections is assisting us with our daily operation and paperwork. I mean, that's how deep this is going in the support that we're receiving from various departments, including the library who's loaned personnel to staff the call center. So lots of moving parts, it's complex, it's complicated at times, it's frustrating at times, what we're seeing. times, what we're seeing. But 302 days in, we're not giving up in this fight. And our organization won't stop until everybody who wants a vaccine gets a vaccine in McDowell County. With that, I'd like to take any questions, of course.
One thing, Wyman, you stated that some of the surrounding counties are pushing some of their people into our county, and you're using the limited amount of vaccines that you're getting for our county to take care of the other counties as well.
Yeah, so the state and some of the press conferences have basically said, folks, it could do that. We've seen this on the testing site, too. We've had a family travel all the way from near Wilkes County a couple of weeks ago to our testing site. So, I think you're seeing people try to get the vaccine wherever they can, and there are other counties that are rolling vaccines out like we are.
Is that fair to the citizens of McDowell County?
No, I mean, I think it's going to be a challenge for all the counties that are out ahead is to try to make this as fair as possible. What we need ultimately is we need more vaccines and we need it pushed out. At this point in time, you're allotted a certain number of vaccines. I think that we're at a point, we've got a plan ready to ramp up based upon the number we're getting, and we're ready to receive those vaccines. But it's very hard and complicated as the state is saying folks can travel through different counties to try to really police this. It's very difficult.
Wyman, is there a timeline that you know of out there that states when there's going to be increased production or when you should receive a greater number of doses that you can make available?
So, we know that the amount will increase once we get in, starting the week of the 25th is when the first round of second shots, so we automatically will get more. Clearly, those are already assigned. That second dosing is assigned because of the people that went through on week one. But I have not had any information or seen anything from public health that indicates when that's going to be ramped up.
Is there anything else that our board can do to help you and your staff and aid in fighting back against this COVID-19 and helping? What can we do? Is there anything you need us to do?
I think the support that we've got from the county manager, from the board, I mean, we've got, if we needed personnel, we've been allowed to give additional personnel. I mean, this is extremely labor-intensive, not only to carry out these operations, but still run our daily operation. Those calls haven't slowed down. That, that operation is 24/7 to begin with, but we're on track to roll this out and the supply chain just needs to loosen for us.
Reactions, has there been any noted reactions to this? I think that's one of the concerns that the public has since I've heard this reaction.
Yeah, we have not, unless one occurs from the time I left this afternoon. I'm not aware, we have not treated anyone for allergic reaction that has come through our drive-through clinics. Thank you.
About the 26% positivity rate, what would be the best recommendation? Is it still the W's?
It is that simple. It's, people have to understand that we have widespread community transmission. You are spreading, if you are positive, you are spreading COVID 48 hours prior to you ever feeling sick. Someone in this room tonight could have COVID. If you come up tomorrow with fever, sore throat, body aches, then anyone that you've been exposed to is a potential risk of contracting COVID. And that's what we continue to see is folks may have small gatherings, large gatherings, and no one is feeling sick, but there can be a positive there, there could be multiple positives there, and you're spreading COVID 48, up to 48 hours prior to having symptoms. And that's where we continue to see this positivity rate be fueled. Unfortunately, it's, as we've talked many times, every holiday, we've seen a significant spike. We were worried about Christmas, we were worried about New Year's. We saw Thanksgiving, it's a two-day holiday, you have more time at Christmas, and it is, unfortunately, this has been our most significant spike so far. We normally will peak 18 days after the holiday, so we're approaching that mark and I hope to see that we will peak. But at this point, it's showing those signs of slowing down.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to suggest that we, as a county, if you're a county employee, to make sure that you're following the guidelines of what's being said. It's been said for months, but we've got to set the example. I do know we can fight this, we can wear masks, and we can wash our hands, and we can keep distance, but we're not following, we're not doing that because it's going crazy. We're fourth in the state with the highest positivity rate. Because, oh, look, I think it's Friday last week, and that's unacceptable. And we, we, together, and I want to, as an encouraging thing, but in two more weeks, if it's still going crazy, I think that we need to consider finding businesses that are open, that are not adhering to the guidelines that are set. I don't want to lose my parents, I don't want to lose my friends that have health problems. It's not right when we can do it. Everybody has said it, and I think we need to follow the guidelines that Mr. Keller's suggesting, and I just, it's a strong recommendation.
I certainly agree with the recommendation you made, Mr. Els. Going to just address and staff, I'm sure that our county manager and Human Resource Department is strong advocates to see that, or all counties always are.
We do have policies internally for wearing masks and distancing, and we have issues where we see masks not being worn and we address it. Unfortunately, I was in a county building today and I saw a vendor not wearing a mask, and I told him, I said, "Put it on. If you're coming in our building, you're going to wear it." I'm so sorry, you know, and it's just, we get out of that habit, or I don't, but some people might, and, and so we've got to stay vigilant. I mean, these numbers aren't going away. We talk all the time about how you can lose the enthusiasm for it now that vaccines are here. It's going to take a very long time for every person in this county that wants a vaccine to be able to get one, so we've got to do all the right things, and then probably even beyond that, until we get to a certain point where we're not at risk, it's threatened again. So, it's, we talk a lot, probably, I do talk to my wife a lot, but I think a close second is Will Keller, and it's just about how serious this is. And so, he keeps, is very informed about what's going on in the community, and it's unfortunate. We have county employees who have family in the hospital right now. It's a ser, it's real, it's serious, and we've been treating it as such, but we have to continue to be strong about it.
Mr. Keller, what's the, someone gets a vaccine, what are they stating is the protection phase, time period?
So, with the Moderna vaccine, it's believed that after the 14-day period after your first injection, that you have around 50% immunity. After your second injection, it's believed that your immunity goes to 95% after 14 days past your second injection. And that's why it's so critical to do everything you can to protect yourself. If there's someone, maybe they're not concerned that COVID causes them a critical incident, maybe they don't have pre-existing medical conditions. But for the elderly in this community, this is a real threat. For those who have medical conditions, this is a real threat. And for those that have caught COVID and have had a minor case, that's a blessing, that it hasn't turned severe. There's no rhyme or reason for the ones that we see have to go on a ventilator that have been on. We've had 30, 40, and 50-year-olds on ventilators in this county. And there's no rhyme or reason as to why they got the acute respiratory component and their friend didn't. I'm very worried about this getting into our elderly population like it has since Christmas. And we cannot continue on the course that we're on. We've got to help these elderly folks, and we've got to help our special needs. And our team's committed to doing that and we'll look forward to giving you another update. But there is good news, the vaccine, we continue to roll it out, there's a lot of interest, and folks were very pleased seeing this response just in six-day period. And we're going to keep fighting this, and we're going to get through this in '21 together. So, thanks for your support, we appreciate it.
How many vaccines have been given at this point?
It's a great question. So, a little over 600 is what's reflected on the DHHS website. A little over 30, I think it's 34, is showing, I've completed both series. That's a number, the state is updating that once a week. So, what's difficult is, we may have, we may have a lot of people that work at Mission Hospital and they get vaccinated there. So, all of that has to be compiled in the state system and it's updating once a week. So, we should know tomorrow what our numbers look like. I think we're going to be over 1,000 tomorrow.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, we, I can see is Friends of Fonte Floor State Trail update, and we have our Bob Hunter with us tonight, and we welcome him and ask him to come on up to the podium, and let's hear from him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of you commissioners, welcome. Before I say Fonte Floor, let me just follow up on Wyman just a minute. Had the pleasure of getting tested this morning. I'm going out of town and my younger daughter asked my wife and I to get tested, and she's been tested a couple of times before, we've always been positive, we haven't had any symptoms. So, I went over there this morning to get tested, and the process that they are doing is really, really, so highly efficient and professional. And I got there a little bit before nine, and I was rolling out there, I think, once they started at nine, I was out there by 10 after nine, I think, and there were cars, double lines. And I got up there, my wife had told me how it stings and hurts a little bit, and so I was really prepared, and somebody came up and did my testing, and I asked them who it was, and I couldn't recognize with the mask on and everything, I couldn't, I didn't hear their name completely when they told me, and I didn't know it till tonight, but this guy was out there giving the test, and he's the one that did my test, and I guess that's why it didn't hurt. But, and then I'm of the age, I don't see anybody else around here that might qualify for vaccine yet, but I did, with the call center, last week, the first day I heard about it, I called. The way it was handled, when I got through, when they opened up that morning, I was number 15 on the list there. They counted down as the calls were answered. I was not on that phone probably 10 minutes. And I got in, and they asked me the questions, and they gave me my site at the high school, and so Friday at 4 o'clock, I'll be over there for my vaccine. They're, they're really organized, and it's amazing, and really, we, and I know y'all do, and thank y'all for the support, Ashley and all the commissioners that you've given them, because it appears that they have the support that they, they need, and now we can just get more vaccines, and if people will do like you heard tonight, hopefully we can get this thing under control. But I did want to mention that and commend them for what they're, what they're doing, the whole, the whole group. Let me, we've got a couple of you commissioners here, so if I could, let me try to give you some info. I don't know how much you know about the Fonte Floor State Trail, but the others, I think, know, but there's updates that I can give you. I think Ashley sent out some kind of slides. If you have that available, I'd like to go through that very quickly, and that'll give you a good update of where we are, and then it'll get to the point that I, the main reason I'm here tonight besides giving you an update. And while you're finding it, I just want to thank y'all for loaning Blair Melton to me and our group. If it wasn't for Blair, we couldn't have gotten to where we are right now, and quite frankly, I couldn't be doing this. It is taking a lot of time, but it's very, very important. Just started out, if you've got that first one slide there, you see the getting trails on the ground, and that just shows you where the trail goes from downtown Moreton to downtown Asheville, and obviously going through Marion and Old Ford. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Then the visitor groundbreaking there, we were going to have the groundbreaking for the visitor center at the state park, and we had that last December. We had gotten the idea of forming this friends group right before that, so we planned while they were doing that groundbreaking to do a presentation, and we did that at Fonte Floor Brewery that same day, right after, which is right near the park campus there, right after the groundbreaking, and we had over 100 people there. And so, everyone was so positive, and so they said, "Let's go." So, we did 501(c)(3) organization, Blair was heavily involved in that, it was Chuck Abernathy, who's owner advisory council, and so that, we've been in existence a little, well, we hadn't been organized completely and officially, but now we're tax exempt for about a year. If you look at the board there, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how we should have our board, and we decided, we've got nine local governments in these three counties, so we felt like we wanted to represent it from each one of those. And David Walker serves on from McDowell County, and the city, you see there, Woody Ayers and Jerome Lefler from Old Ford. We have a trails person, and this is for each county, it's similar. Trails person, here it's Steve Pierce, and then an economic development person, and here it's Steve Bush. And so, we have that for the three counties, and then you see we've got four designated slots. I'm on there from the Friends of Lake James State Park, that's where this idea originated, so that's why they have a designated city. Foot Hills Conservancy, Andrew Coe, the executive director, from the YMCA, Western North Carolina Tim Blenko, and Heritage Foundation, which is the old Care Partners Foundation, Meg White, and then from Raleigh on State Parks, the state trails planner, Smith Rayner, his ex officio, and then you see our executive committee there. And then next slide shows you a little bit better idea of where the trail goes through. And there you can see the logo on the side of the building up at Old Ford. The logo is the feather. The next slide there, it's amazing what's going on at Old Ford. And let me just mention that briefly, you'll see those different logos there. You've got the town, you've got Fonte Floor, you've got, what's G5 Trail Collective. Have y'all had a presentation yet, Ashley? Okay, so you know about what's going on there, that's going to be 20 miles of trail up around Old Ford. Kitzboz, the new manufacturing people up there, one of their persons, Jim Bilstrom, is our secretary. And you see the Forest Service, the Old Ford Ride House, the people on the move, McDowell Tech. And I think if you had a presentation on what McDowell Tech is going to do, Ashley?
They've been made aware with the program up there.
That is really going to be something, and you'll also see on there Camp Greer, people who've come for that McDowell presentate of certification will be able to stay at Camp Greer. And of course, Foot Hills Conservancy, they've already built, I think it's finished, I'm not 100% sure, three miles of trail up there near Camp Greer that's going to help us get from their trailhead in Old Ford that I'll talk about in just a second. But to get to Point Lookout, which as you know, is already there, it goes to the top of the mountain to Ridgecrest. So, that, that collaborative up there, just a lot going on, and we'll talk just a little bit more about that in a second. The McDowell Tech program I mentioned, and Stacy Buck and McDowell Tech, and besides the board that we have, we have an advisory council. And on it, Blair's on it, she- And on it, Blair's on it, she's our acting executive director, but Chuck's on it, Heather Cotton, Kim Upler from the Chamber of Commerce, Stacy Buff now. So we've got, and we've got people from all these other counties. So they're the people that will be helping us and making sure that we have the right recommendations for the board to move things forward. We are talking about, when this happened, a couple of things. We said, let's take this from probably a 30-year program to get this trail done to a 10-year program. And so that's, that's what we're going to be working to do. The trail is probably 70, I've heard 78, I've heard 100 miles. So it's, it's a big undertaking. Burke County got a head start because they got $10 million from Duke Power. So the trail is really around, is going well around Lake James and mostly in Burke County. But there's things going on in McDowell and so, but let me, let me finish with, and I'll come back to some of those, those things. The trailhead and park at Old Ford, you've heard some about that, but that is really a big focus right now. The state has purchased, it's been completed, 30 acres of property up there and it's right beside between the railroad and I-40. And it's been leased to the town of Old Ford for a dollar a year, so the property is available. We're waiting for the money to develop it and we applied for a part of grant. We had to rush to get that in and we didn't quite get it. We've had communications with them, they have some other money now. We're hoping we'll, we'll have another meeting in January. We're hoping to get some of that other money. If we don't, we may have to wait until next fall for the other part of money to come through. But they told us if they had known then, what they know now, we'd have gotten funded in the fall. But being a new organization and not having any professionals to help us, we put it together and we had to do it quickly. But we're working to get some, some money that's available and if it works out like I hope, we'll have that hopefully this spring. But that trailhead up there, the trail will come through it, it'll be a, Old Ford is going to have a park there. You're a part of that. Old Ford, quite frankly, didn't have the money. We applied for $300,000 from Part of Parks and Recreational Trust Fund is what that stands for. And so that's some state funding and we have to match that 50/50. So Old Ford couldn't afford to do that. We got them to agree to do 100,000. Y'all put up 100,000. We came to you and you met that request and we raised $100,000 from an anonymous donor. So that money is still sitting and waiting and hopefully we'll get to get that. As soon as we get that money, we're ready to go. As a matter of fact, there are two old houses on that property, I had asbestos down, we've had it tested. We've also raised $20,000 to, to get that tested and get, now asbestos is going to have to be removed. That should start sometime in the next two weeks. Jay Dover and, and his company, and by the way, Jay had a really serious, really serious COVID-19 within the hospital 15 weeks, no, five weeks, I believe. But he's getting over it. But Jay will be doing that. And then Ford Miller's company, Miller Engineering will be coming in, active asbestos is removed and demolishing it and clearing that site. So we're ready, once we get the money, and we raised $20,000 to do that as well. So we, we put, we're putting some money back into the, into the county. The next, and we'll go through there from that trailhead, we're having conversations with DOT about how we get from the trailhead to connect up to Camp Greer. We're going to be working to get planning money and start getting that in the DOT budget. Also in the DOT funding now, and Ashley and I'll talk more about that later, we're working, DOT suspended the money that we had to connect up between the, the greenway that the city did and the county park that y'all did with the trail there. I've had a conversation with the chairman of the DOT board, they've now are releasing funds for the highway projects, as you know, with funding, they ceased everything. And so that is going to start again, we're having conversations to get that money flowing so we can connect those two greenway sites. So that's, that's critical to get that done. So all of that is going on. You'll see also there the Black Bear and y'all, and Duke Power is doing a great job with that, that's going to really be something. We did not have anything to do with that directly, but Blair and I did meet with the lady in Duke Power and the trail originally goes through there, you'll see it, originally it wasn't going to go all the way out of their property back up to the road. Now they say that they think they can do that for us. So we worked on that. Foot Hills has bought some property down there that's near that site. And so we're working on getting through that section with the trail. And then you'll have from there through Lake James, there's some things going over there at, I guess it's North Fork and how we plan to get through there. Come up by the baseball, Big League and then on in up PNC Road into downtown Marion, out to the Five Lane, connect up to the greenway. And then we, we hope in the project, the DOT money will take us over to Resistiflex Road. We have the right of way to go to the end of Tom Johnson's Service Center. And so we hope that we'll be able to get the trail at least to Resistiflex Road and hopefully on to extend it that other area there in the not too distant future. So you see all that, it's basically been going on and, and let me then get you to another. Oh, let me briefly mention North Carolina Coalition of Trails. That's something that really, I've been a part of, Beth Hale, who's our treasurer, is on the Part of Board, she's from Valdez, excellent board member. She and I, Andrew Cota, I mentioned Andrew, he was Foot Hills Conservancy, we're part of a group that started this North Carolina Coalition of Trails and it is now all over the state of groups that are doing trails. We've come up with a proposal that will be sent into the governor and the general assembly that you'll see there, and I'm not going to go into it, what we're asking them to do. I would mention that part of that would be to fund each one of these state trails. Now, these are state trails and the state hasn't put a dime in them yet, other than through part of money for grants. But as far as operating in these trails, we're asking them to give each one of the nonprofits, and there are nine so far, state trails, probably some added, $150,000 so we can run these organizations. Everybody says if you're going to be successful, you've got to have a full-time director, somebody that's dedicated to doing this. Having said that, the next thing there, you're going to see the funding request, but let's go over, I think Ashley sent you another email that has a budget. And if you can find that real quick, and I know you're pressed for time, and I'm going to try to take you to that so that I can tell you what, what we're asking y'all to, to do. And it was sent, and Ashley, I believe you sent it out to them, it's a budget, revised budget that we've done.
Yeah, it came kind of late, so you'd have to check your email computer to get that.
So what that is, that's the budget there and we had to revise our budget from basically $150,000, which was going to be the funding from the local governments we requested, along with $8,000 that we expect to get in individual memberships. And let me say that the money we get in, that, that's for operations. The money we get in from corporations or donors or grants, that's going to go in a separate account and that'll go back to helping like McDowell County or Old Ford or Burke County or Morganton with the projects that they're going to be doing. So we're helping, helping them. So we expect, besides getting additional sales tax money and the TDA money that'll come into the county, we expect to be able to put money into these local governments as they have projects come up and are looking for matching money. So this is, we had to revise our budget and this gives us a part-time executive director. We think that we can get by on that for the time being. And let me say, most of the work that we've been doing has been in McDowell County. Burke is farther along, so we've been working more in McDowell, of course, getting organized is a big thing. But having Blair, the ability to continue to work with these projects, Burke County has somebody that 50% of their time is dedicated to this trail. We think we can manage if we have a part-time executive director to run everything and we're going to be working with all these partnerships to get trail on the ground. We're not going to build trail, but we're going to help all these other groups build the trail. You'll see the funding amounts there and I'll close with that. Our executive committee looked at how we thought would be, we thought that these are state trails, but they're also, they're going to really benefit our local governments. And so we got to all the local governments involved in our board. And so we felt like if we could raise some money from the local governments, we came up with a plan based upon population, the size, and if you'll see, Glen Ile Pine, Old Ford, the smallest one's $1,000. Black Mountain and Marion are another category of population, 5,000. And then Morganton, their population, 10,000. We met with them the other night and we're, we feel good that that hopefully will be coming. We're here tonight with McDowell County and you see what category you come in. Asheville was going to be 20,000 and, excuse me, 30,000. And Burke there is also 30. They're meeting next week, their chairman, Johnny Carwell, some of y'all have worked with him, is on our board. And so they, Johnny feels comfortable that they're going to be working with us. You'll see there that Glen Ile Pine, Old Ford and Marion have already asked to be invoiced. Black Mountain is meeting tonight and they tell me that they should be approving tonight. Asheville and Bonneville, that's been a disappointment, I have to come out and say it. They, the trail up there is just not as important to them as it is to McDowell and Burke. They don't have experience with it. And quite frankly, they can get all the people, they won't come in Asheville right now, it's about with everything, people want to go up there, whatever. So, and they've got people and they've got trails going on in other places, so we have not been able to get them, but really, they're on the board and they're participating, but they've said no to funding requests. So that was about half our budget based on population. So that's why we had to go from a full-time executive director to a part-time, assuming that we can get the money and we hope you'll come through tonight. We really need, it's a one-time thing, we really need it now, we've identified somebody that's a good possibility that we can hire that would be really an excellent person to run this operation. Quite frankly, I can't keep spending the amount of time that I've spent on it. I love doing it, but, and like I said, if it hadn't been for Blair, I couldn't have done it. But we've got to have somebody that's dedicated and looks at all these moving parts and is working. And 2023 is going to be the year of the trail in the state. I got an email today from the state, they're already asking us to do a one-year and a five-year plan on what we're going to be doing and to plan events. So it's going to be a lot going on. We're excited. And we need, we need y'all's help to, to make it and I think we can get somebody hired probably in the next 30 days that will keep us moving even better. Let me stop and I know I've gone quickly, I've tried to cover a lot of different things, but thank y'all again for what y'all have been doing. And if you can do this, we, we think we can show you some, some good results. We only need this once a year. So we wouldn't need it again until next year. If the state comes through with full funding on that 150, we'll tell you we don't, we don't need you then. Let me stop and see if y'all have any questions or anything that I can answer. We had other people, but Steve Pierce and some others, but they're not, they would have been on Zoom, but we weren't able to work that out. But I'm here and I appreciate you letting me come in person to, to share this with you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that Woody Ayers did call me this afternoon and said he would not be able to be here tonight, but he did state that on, on his behalf and council's behalf, that they would love to see us participate. And that leads me to a question. Judge Hunter, and I know you probably looked at it, what kind of expected revenue could, what studies have been done to reject, what kind of revenue, when you get these trails linked all the way up, could, could come as a result of our investment?
Well, that's, that's hard to say. That's one thing we'll be trying to do, we'll try to get the TDAs and others to help us with that. I know Burke County is saying they're already seeing increased things, their TDA directors on our board. And they're, they're already seeing, they're farther ahead. And with the lake and the loop around there, that's drawing a lot, the parking lots are filling up down there all the time. And with the COVID, a lot of bad things from it, but one thing, people are getting out and using the trails and we're seeing a lot more activity. So there's going to be more sales tax, the more trail we get on the ground, Old Ford is going to be, is where you're going to see it in, in McDowell County, in my opinion, where the money will be most directly. You're going to have a lot of people down when you get to park at Black Bear. But Old Ford is really, is, is really moving. And we're going, that's our focus right now, to connect up from that trailhead to Black Mountain. And let me mention Ridgecrest. Ridgecrest, I don't know if you know about Ridgecrest, but it was getting ready, the kind of, people thought it was going to shut down, it was going to be sold. We were afraid it was going to be developed and we'd lose that. And it has a lot of easements that are really crucial to us. I'm glad to say Steve Little, who's worked with them, was their attorney and he's been involved in Ridgecrest for a long time. But that has been sold, it's going to be continuing to operate. They've indicating a willingness to work with us on any needed easements. And we even think we're going to be able to connect up through there over to Montree and there's a lot of trails over Montree. You're going to see that whole Old Ford area become hiking and bicycling, that is going to be.
Off-road bicycling, if you go to buy a bicycle that these people use to go off-road, $10,000 is nothing to spend on a bike, that's nothing.
And those people are really anxious to get involved and help and we think we can get them involved in helping with some trails and different things. They're talking about, it's a part of this trailhead up there, they've got a, they've got a new kind of a site that you can put a location that lets people use trail bikes in it and teaches young kids to use them and a lot of, lot of things will be up there.
Mr., I don't know, we certainly appreciate you coming in and we appreciate all the valuable information you've given us tonight. We certainly, I think we can, I can speak as consensus of all the commissioners here tonight, we certainly support what you guys are doing and appreciate all the hard work.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, guarantee one, that we go ahead and invest, and I'll use the word invest, $20,000 into this position because as we all know, if you have someone who is a go-getter, they can bring more money back in and be that much more of an advocate. And you don't have time to do that, Judge, you, you're busy. You're a great advocate, you do wonderful, but as you stated tonight to us, you need somebody who can take it from where you've got it and bring it on home.
I'll sign that motion. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. You opposed?
Well, thank y'all so much. I know I picked John just myself. We have our board meeting tomorrow night, David. And then the council, advisory council will be meeting Wednesday night. And so we'll be giving them reports and I think we'll be able to tell them that we're going to be able to fund this. And it's not just, it's got to be somebody can run an organization. This is going to be an organization and it's got a lot of moving parts. And so I think that a lot of good things will go on. We'll keep you informed if you have questions or anything, contact David or Blair, Blair's will be essential. Y'all've got a lot of things going on in the county that you'll be involved in and we're going to keep working and make things better and better. And again, thank y'all so much, I appreciate your work.
I will say this, Mr. Hunter, we, we were made aware of this coming up and it's going to be on the agenda and our staff has worked tirelessly trying to figure out a way to find the funding to do this.
He's, he's been very, very helpful. I called him and I get a chance to go by and Ashley, as always, been very, very cooperative. And again, y'all came up with that matching money, we had to have your 100,000 on that part of grant to make that all work. You did that. So that's, it just, and we're going to be doing a lot of other stuff. So, and I know y'all will have, have to find money sometimes and, but I think it's going to, you're going to see good results from anything that you do. And we're going to be trying to help you as best we can. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, moving along, we'll go to, I may, under old business. Under old business, Mr. Wood, would you like to lead us off on the public shooting range update?
Sure. In case anyone's wondering, we recommend doing the closed session at the end. The public shooting range update, this is pretty brief. You do have some pictures and updates in the, in the packet from Mr. Bailey with NC Wildlife. Really need, just for, to keep the project moving, we need to have a formal name approved by the board. We did get very good clarity from Wildlife that it pretty much needs to be geographical. While they do have names on some facilities, those were tied into NC Wildlife officials, and apparently that's an older policy. So the options are pretty limited, but they did recommend something with McDowell County and shooting range and public being in the name. So you know where it is, and what it is, and what you're going to experience. So McDowell County Public Shooting Range has been suggested.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to not grade. Save Ashley, save your topic a little bit.
Mr. Chairman, if you entertain a motion, I'll make a motion. We call the facility, McDowell County Public Shooting Range.
Second motion. Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. McDowell County Shooting Range, Public Shooting Range.
Very few options.
Make sure we put public in there. Okay, move along to item B, Emergency Services Billings Update. Mr. Wood.
This is mostly just a placeholder to, not, you need reminding that the projects are still ongoing. I do like to put pictures in for you to see. You could see a tremendous amount of progress in Station 4. And definitely, when that is ready to go, we're probably not going to have a big to-do with punching cookies and all that, but we'll definitely make sure that you get to go in and see it when it's.
We need a ribbon cutting.
Definitely for, we can have a distance appropriate ribbon cutting. We'll have masks to mark the occasion. The headquarters on Barnes Road, you have a couple of photos in there, the office trailer is on site. They, if you do, I do see some rebar for the footers in place, so that is good to see. And we're still on schedule with that project, even with the weather of having it completion by the end of this calendar year. So if that slips, we'll definitely let you know.
Okay, thank you. Moving down to C, Universal Park Disc Golf Proposal. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. This was introduced last month. This is a request from members of the community that are enthusiasts for disc golf. Very quick history, the city of Marion used to have a disc golf course in one of their parks. Really turned out to not be a good location for it, so that equipment was removed. And why that's important is some of that equipment has been donated to these individuals who would like to then donate it for this park. So that's sort of a neat tie-in to our partners at the city. But again, last month, you were presented with this. There was a question from the county attorney to look into liability. And so we just wanted to make sure that these activities were covered. And yes, they are. We have general liability for recreational activities. And so as long as signs are up, you know, that would be part of the, part of the deal. That we have signs and rules and different advisories so that people are staying safe. So if you approve, we'll work with the, with the group to make sure the equipment is placed in appropriate places as soon as we can.
Please, your board.
Chairman, I make a motion. We have received the donated equipment and have it placed, and then if it ever ceases to be used for a disc range, if the people who donated to us want it back, we donate it back to them.
Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Any discussion?
So, discussion, we will put signage up to make sure that everything's in the holder. Okay, general liability wise.
Okay, move along to new business. Item A, County Boundary Survey Request. Mr. Wood.
Okay, thank you. There, there's an action item as well as an update here. The action item has to do with most of the McDowell and Burke boundary. Our tax assessing department had identified some parcels in the southeastern portion of the county that, according to our information, appeared to be where they should be in McDowell County. However, they are being assessed by Burke County, and voter registration and school attendance and all those things go with Burke, where they probably should be in McDowell. So we talked to some folks with the state about some guidance on a situation like that. And when there's some dispute, and I mean that in a polite, civil sense, they recommend that the line be surveyed. So there's a general statute that governs that process. And so that would be a process that the state would oversee, assuming all the counties involved agreed to it in the first place. The state would survey the lines at no cost, and any of the counties involved, that would present the, the boundary where it truly is, and the counties have to accept it. And then whatever happens, happens as far as where the parcels are. It's a much better approach than our opinion, their opinion, or whomever. You do have on page, I guess 40 in your packet, the conversation with Burke was mostly focused in the Dyersville area on that line that's highlighted. The tax administrator in Burke County noted that the line north, more or less along the Limble Gorge to Neverson map either. So the state recommended those two disjointed sections be mapped. The line in the middle, along Lake James, was mapped about 15 years ago. So we would be requesting that you pass a resolution, as well as Burke County, and Avery County, and Rutherford County, since it involves corners that are located in those counties, their boards would have to consent as well. I have spoken with the three other managers, and they informally said there was no issue, but if one of the counties object, we can't move forward.
So don't hold your breath while this is being done.
That's right.
The NC and Mitchell have been one.
I'll touch on that, maybe if you approve the resolution, I'll give an update on the other.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve resolution.
Second. A motion in two or three seconds. All in favor, say aye.
I mentioned there was an update in the conversation with the state officials. They mentioned, oh, by the way, because I think someone asked how long this process will take. They said, well, we're moving a lot faster than we used to. Like the McDowell-Mitchell request you guys requested in 2012 is almost done. Because I was here in 2012, and I vaguely remember the request, but I had to go back and research, and they sent a copy of the resolution that was requested. And so the information there, sort of a, be on alert. At some point in the next few months, I anticipate we will receive formal notification from the Geodetic Survey that the survey is complete. They will send that formally to McDowell and Mitchell, and we will have to make adjustments to the parcel maps in that area, where the main focus being Little Switzerland, where there's always been some level of dispute, sometimes not as civil. So that will help end some of those disputes. So there could be changes on where folks are assessed based on that process. But honestly, I think if you asked anyone involved, they might have forgotten that it was requested eight years ago, almost nine. So hopefully this will not take as long.
Okay, moving on to item B, Review Officer Resolution.
Right, very brief here. You're authorizing, or asking you to authorize individuals that can make parcel map changes. And this is specifically related to the city boundary, city parcels. There's been a staff change at City Hall, and so we're asking that you add Spencer Crawford to their resolution of authorized officials.
Okay, what's the board? Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor? Item C, Administrative Items.
Just two items in general here. You have EMS write-offs. Again, these are non-collectible accounts, either through debt, or no estate, or what have you. We've made tremendous effort to collect these. I'd ask you to approve those.
Please, your board. Motion to approve. Motion approved. Got a second. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any votes?
Then we have Budget Amendments, GF 18 through 26, SP 4, and Universal Enterprise 1. I can go over any of those if you'd like.
The, one question, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Wood, the sinkhole, and what, tell about that. I know there's a little bit of it.
Right, the warehouse to the rear of this facility, we've mentioned, maybe going back actually to the last board, there was a sinkhole that developed underneath one corner of the building. And so most of that was covered by an insurance claim, thankfully. And so we did bring in a firm, I believe from Charlotte, who specializes in foundation stabilization for large buildings. There's not many in the state, as you can imagine. And so the foundation of that building actually cracked and settled several inches below where it was. So that foundation was jacked back up. There was filling happened of a material grout underneath the foundation. Various drainage sewer water lines that broke in the process that evolved and repaired. So it was a pretty, pretty big deal, considering it was in the back of a warehouse. A lot going on, a lot of moving parts.
Did our insurance carrier provide any relief?
They did for most of the part outside of where it was just ground, where there's ground settling, they would not cover. But if it was tied into infrastructure, they would cover.
Okay. Moving on to item D, Tax Matters. Go ahead, Mr. Wood.
The tax matters are routine, and again, to start these off, especially for our new members, we have some write-offs for, these are vehicles. And then we have releases for vehicles. Do you have some discoveries that are from properties that have been identified by staff? Some different releases that are attached. Ask if you approve.
This time, we'll open forward for citizen comments.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the items as presented.
Okay, excuse me. We got a motion to approve the items that Mr. Wood just described. Second.
That's right.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Excuse me. Okay, we'll go to citizen comments now. Does anybody here want to address the board with any citizen comment?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion now to go into closed session.
Mr. Chairman, present General Statute 143-318.113. I make a motion to go into closed session for a legal matter.
And this is the Whittman Properties bankruptcy that we'll be discussing.
Second. Okay, got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye. Consider as having closed session. Okay, moving along. Mr. Staff, Reports and Communications. Mr. Wood.
Mr. Chairman, I will note that next Monday, county offices will be closed from Martin Luther King Holiday. Usually there's an event or two over that weekend. We're not aware of any. I'm assuming it will be virtual this year. If we get something, we will make sure to send it out to the board.
I know. Yeah, keep us updated on that.
Yes, sir.
Some of it's about to go, some of it's been. Any, anything from the commissioners?
I'd like to ask, actually, if we could, to try to, working with Allison and stuff, there are some grants out there to help improve the internet, and a lot of it's matching-type grants. And in talking with Allison, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to Ashley about it, I'd like to put it in his court to work it out, what can we afford to do here? But look at potential sales tax of where we're over, and if it's possible to get up to $250,000 earmarked specifically for improving the internet here in the county. And that would be working with, to have it in a, in the general fund earmarked for that. And then if we can get some of these grants where it's five-to-one, or six-to-one, or four-to-one, three-to-one split, we would have that money ready for that. And I, I would like to say if you could work on that, you know, between now and the next.
Budget.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay. Anything else? If not, do I hear a motion?
So be it.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aha.
We are adjourned.